Much. Okay, so everyone, welcome to the freshman class information meeting. I'm Dr. Muggera, your administrator, that's the twenty twenty-three administrator. And we also have with us Ms. Dean and Ms. Trimble. Ms. Trimble is our NYPD coordinator. She will be discussing NYPD, what that is. And we also have Ms. Dean, as I mentioned before, she is the class sponsor. So that is the these are three staff members who are with us today. And we're going to go ahead and discuss real quickly what we're going to be covering. In this presentation, we're going to be talking about fourth quarter grading and reporting, Chromebook and Wi-Fi distribution, as you see here. Some of you have asked, and many of you parents who are maybe on the line as well have asked, what are we going to be doing? How are we going to be able to get our belongings from BCC? We're going to discuss obligations and returning materials. Summer learning opportunities. Some of you may want to still purchase the yearbook, which you're able to do so. And then also, we'll take a look at some of the submitted student questions. And just to heads up, some of the questions that were submitted will be will be answered, excuse me, within this presentation. And just any general class information that we have to discuss with you all. So with that being said, let's discuss about marking period four. As many of you know, the last day of school is going to be June fifteenth, twenty twenty. And so we are soon approaching that deadline, which is going to be about two weeks from this Monday. And just to let you know, some of you may notice already, some of you may not. But we will have quarter four be pass or incomplete. So quarter four will not be the traditional grading system. We'll take a look at the chart that was given by Central Office that your parents or you yourself have received. And I just want to make sure everyone knows as well that if you received an I for quarter three, you have until May twenty ninth, which is today, to resolve your grade before it converts to an E. So some of you received an I. And some of you have discussed that with your teachers. And some of you submitted the work that needed to be turned in, just in FYI that today is the last day. So we'll make sure that all of you are aware of that. Okay. So with marking period four, as I mentioned before, you will have, you will not receive a traditional letter grade, A, B, C, D, or an E. You will have a pass or incomplete. So the county put out specific benchmarks that you have to meet in order to receive a pass. The benchmarks are posted here on the screen, as you can see. So they have four different areas in which you should be able to meet. But you have to meet two of these four benchmarks, which are assignment completion, content and skills. The third one is engagement, and also fourth is teaching professional judgment. And so that basically kind of gives you an overview. But I want to focus on number one, assignment completion. I know it's very difficult because we're in this virtual learning format. And this is something that's kind of unprecedented. So therefore, there are some students who may have a little more difficulty because you're you're learning virtually as opposed to the traditional method. But number one is the completion of the assignments. So make sure that you are completing your assignments on a daily basis. You need to have at least fifty percent of the assignments completed. Make sure you're getting the content and skills and also be engaged. Check your Google Classroom, your MCPS Classroom, respond to your teacher's email. And also, the teachers will be able to use their professional judgment and giving you the ability to have you pass. Here is the high school semester course chart that basically will explain to you how you're going to be able to have a final grade of A, B, C, D, or sometimes you may need it incomplete depending on the circumstances. But essentially, MP four, as we mentioned, is going to be a pass or incomplete. It lets you know here that your final grade will be an A or a pass, or B or a pass, or C or a pass, or D or a pass, which means that students actually have the option to receive a pass. And when I talk about how they get to choose that in the moment, the details are still coming coming out from Central Office. However, they just did kind of forewarn everyone that the date that's going to be, the date that students are going to be able to select and families, I guess you could say, will be online. It won't be this coming week, but it'll be the week after that. And we're going to take a look at that in one of the future slides. So you get to choose if you want to have a pass or a letter grade per se. So let's look at what the two bullets specifically say. There's going to be an online portal for students and families to make their initial grading option choice for each course. It's going to be available, excuse me, it will be actually available June fourth, and will close on June twelfth. This is information that was included in the community message that goes out to families almost every week. And more information will be sent within next week to prepare students for that process. Some of you may want to make an informed decision on whether you want to decide to, which grading option do you want to go with? Also, continuation of this, making the choice for pass or incomplete. You may want to revisit that with your with your counselor. We're going to talk about that process, or the county will distribute that process will look like. We don't know at BCC what the process will look like in regards to how does a student or family get to decide on which grades they want for which respective classes? But that's that's forthcoming. As I mentioned before, it did say the date of June fourth, and it's going to close June twelfth. This is information that's pulled from the superintendent's message that distributed, that was distributed out to the various families. Okay. Chromebook and Wi-Fi hotspot distribution. We are continuing to do our Chromebook distribution or swap outs. I guess you want to call it swap out because most of you, if not all of you, already have the device. Each and every Tuesday from here on out to the end of the school year. So we have only about maybe two Tuesdays left. So Tuesday, June second, and also June ninth, between nine and three is when you can come to BCC, just right in the main area, right through the front doors in the vestibule, near the main lobby. You will meet with one of the administrators, who might be myself or any other grade level administrator. And we'll be able to exchange if you have an issue with a laptop or your Chromebook, or you need a hotspot. We are still going to be able to assist you, and that is from nine to three Tuesday, just coming Tuesday, June second, and also the following Tuesday, June ninth. There's also a technical support number, which you can see listed here. As I as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we are recording this. So the number will be there, and we'll be able to put this on YouTube for any family member or student to review. So getting things from school, many of you probably want to know, how do I get my things from school? I have so many things in my locker, I have some personal items and so forth and so on. We recognize that obviously you do have personal items at the school. And right now, we're putting together a plan for you to safely come to get your items. We don't have a specific date because we are still working with Central Office personnel in regards to when we're going to be able to have that specific date. It's going to actually probably be more than one day because we have so many students. And it actually may extend beyond the last day of school. So we're asking that you all remain patient, or we are actually working with administrative team locally at BCC and also Central Office Personnel, because we do have to receive authorization of when we're going to be able to then have maybe three or four or five days. And we're going to have to put it in a systemic way or structured way. That way, we don't have anyone coming to the school at the same time to get your personal items. So that information will be coming shortly. So we're asking you, please be patient with us as we work and get approval for the dates that we would like to have students come to get their personal items. Now, some of you may not be maybe familiar with this obligation to returning school materials. Please be mindful that if you do have a book, you do have to return that book. Because what teachers will do is they'll go through the inventory list, and then they'll mark off if a student did or did not return the book. And that, of course, will, if you didn't return a book, that would then be an obligation to your to your account. You definitely don't want to have obligations on your account because that will stop you from participating in certain activities, specifically if you're a senior, which none of you are because you're all in ninth grade. But that can be hurtful to you because when you become a senior, you may not be able to do things like cap and gown and maybe graduation or prom or things of that nature. You want to make sure you don't have any obligations. So please make sure you return anything that was lent to you or that you borrowed from the school, whether it be a book or a Chromebook. Make sure you return those items when we are able to release the date for you to come to BCC to return them. Summer learning opportunities. MCPs is holding summer school. BCC was originally selected to be a summer school site. However, as those plans have changed because of COVID nineteen. So right now, there are three formats that were in in the works, which was a face-to-face session, five hours per day for students to retake for a higher grade. The other option was a summer online pathways to graduation. Then the third option was a blending learning course, which is kind of like a hybrid where you may have some online and maybe one or two, three days face-to-face in-person instruction. So as I mentioned before, we were supposed to have BCC be a site for summer school. However, those plans have changed as I mentioned due to COVID nineteen. So we will not have BCC be a host as a physical site per se. Now, if you go to the MCPs website, you can search summer school. They have the most recent information on there. Many people have inquired about the BCC summer health class. We actually have two sections of that of that class that's being offered, but those classes are actually full. However, MCPs is offering the same health class during summer sessions. So I know some of you were disappointed when you couldn't get into the summer health class. But really, there is no difference. You're still going to get the half credit, it's still going to be the same curriculum, it's the same course. You'll get that half credit, and it'll be the same cost as well. It's just not being talked by a BCC instructor. That's really what the difference is, to be honest with you. There's also some summer school-based options that are being in the works right now. Some of your academic departments, like maybe English and science, may be working on some summer assignments for students. So be on the lookout for that. It's also strongly encouraged that all of you students, please check your student emails, student accounts. So sometimes, oftentimes, there are pertinent, there's this important information that's sent to your emails, and that's the way we communicate you officially. And I just want to put this one plug in there is that we want to make sure that when you are emailing staff and students, or even myself, we were encouraging you, and you really need to use your student email. That's the way we kind of officially communicate with students. So we're asking that you please discontinue emailing us from your Hotmail, your Yahoo, or your Gmail accounts. Make sure that you're using your MCPs MD.net account when you're communicating with us as BCC staff members. Okay. So yearbooks. Yearbooks are extended, as they send it through June first or until the books sell out. So there are just about, as you see on the screen here, about a hundred copies remaining. If you go to yearbookordercenter.com and you enter in the code forty-nine fifty-one, you're going to be able to, and of course, make an order for your yearbook, your BCC yearbook. Right now, we do not have plans on how you're going to be able to pick them up, but at least you'll be able to reserve them. And if you do need financial assistance, please email me, and we can discuss that, how we're going to be able to assist you. So that is how you're going to be able to order your yearbooks for this year. And of course, this is your first year in high school. So it's very, very important that you order your yearbook. As a matter of fact, in my home office here, I have my all my yearbooks from K through eight, all four of my yearbooks from high school, and I have some yearbooks from university level. So those are definitely important for you to take part of as memories. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit here, and then we're going to have Ms. Trimble discuss about the NYPD personal project.
Okay, hi, everyone. Dr. Muggera, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My neighbor just started mowing his lawn, so.
It's okay.
Good thing for headphones, right?
Yeah, just yeah. Just let me know when you want me to switch this the slides.
You can switch it to the next slide.
Okay.
So today, hi, everyone. My name's Ms. Trimble, I'm the NYPD coordinator at BCC. So today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what you can expect next year for your NYPD personal project. This also relates to your summer reading or your summer assignment for English ten. So as a rising tenth-grade student, you're going to be starting to kind of think about some ideas for this really cool project you'll be doing all year long next year. So that's going to end up being your your summer assignment for English class this year. So basically, the the NYPD personal project, it's a student-directed project that takes place over the course of several months. Okay. It's something that focuses on your research skills. It requires a lot of self-management, thinking and reflection. It's something, what I really love about it is you get to choose something that you're interested in or passionate about. Maybe it's something you want to learn more about, and you kind of design your own project and work on it in several different ways. So there's like a research component to it, there's a final product component to it, there's a journaling component to it. And usually, we have the NYPD personal project showcase in the spring so that my plan was to have all of you go and see those projects this year to be able to kind of see it and get excited about doing it for next year. I'm looking into ways I can do something like that virtually. But yeah, unfortunately, you weren't able to see them this spring with COVID shutting everything down. But so this is a requirement of all tenth-grade students. So completing the summer assignment kind of sets you up already right out of the gate with potentially using that research to lead into your project. The tenth grade or the personal project does go on your transcript, and it's a point-five elective credit. So it is a requirement. But aside from that, it's a really cool assignment that allows you to kind of take risks that you might not normally take in a traditional classroom setting. You're also assigned a mentor teacher, who is a staff member, who's going to kind of guide you through the project and help you at different steps along the way. And of course, I will be there very much so guiding you along the way, whether that be in person or remotely, we'll see. So like I said, your summer reading assignment is going to serve as your initial research for the project. So you're going to be brainstorming ideas about what you are thinking of doing. And you'll be collecting research, three different sources that could serve as your starting point in the fall for your project. I will say that I haven't received IB. As far as I know, all of this is kind of on track for being the same for the fall. But that, you know, we're kind of, we're in a an unprecedented situation right now. We're, you know, we're getting new directives from IB. So there might be smaller things that are changed about due dates or requirements with it that will be a little more flexible. So we'll see. But right now, this is kind of what we're working with. All right, Dr. Muggera, you can switch to the slide. Okay, so this is just kind of going into some of those those required components of the project. And I am going to go over this more in depth with you in the fall. And you will have some of this information, or you'll have all this information available to you when when you get your summer assignment, which will be in the next two weeks. It will be posted on the BCC website, along with all the other summer assignments. So this is not for your summer reading, this is for the NYPD project next year. So this is just to give you a little preview of what you can expect. So next year, you'll be doing a reflection journal. So your process journal, you are writing things down along the way that you are learning about your topic. So you're kind of keeping track of all your research and your reflections on your project so far, how it's going, and any adjustments that you're making. All right, you can click Dr. Muggera. Your outcome or your final product is like a physical product related to your topic. So that might be a brochure, it could be even, it could be digital. So it could be a website, it could be a video. That's going to be due in the end of January. You also complete a trifold board with it that kind of shows off your your project and what you were able to accomplish with it. And that goes for the personal project showcase. So that's when we're kind of showing it off to the next class. And then the final piece, and this is actually the most important piece, that is your personal project report. And that's not due till February, but it's the most important part. It's where you're bringing together all the pieces of your project and writing a formal report on all of that. So that that's a year-long thing that we're leading up to. It's something that you'll be working on pieces of it along the way. And there are structured appointments with your staff supervisor, who's going to help you maintain, you know, these different pieces of it. So but it does require a lot of self-management, too. So this is something I think is a great thing for you to get started thinking about. It's certainly something you're going to have to start thinking about with your summer assignment. But what better time to be thinking about a topic for this than than right now? So I think that's it. Was that the last slide? Oh, I, there's one more slide, Dr. Muggera. So if you, I'm, like I said, there's going to be more information coming out about the summer assignment in the coming weeks. So it'll be on the BCC website, along with all the other summer assignments. But if you have like questions that I don't answer, and you really want some clarification on anything, that's my email address. So feel free to email me. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate you giving us information about the NYPD project for the students that will be taking place next year. And so with that being said, we're going to continue on with the presentation here. Ms. Dean, I hope I got the Twitter handle correctly. I think I did. ECCSGA twenty-three at Twitter. If you guys have Twitter accounts, you can follow the SGA twenty-two-three Twitter account. If you have any questions or ask, contact any of your SGA reps. You can also check your school email frequently, as I mentioned before. That's how we officially communicate with US students. Every student at MCPs, there's almost a hundred and seventy thousand of you. You all have student emails, and so that's how we officially communicate with you. So if you have questions, please make sure that you're emailing us from your student email, that we are also able to identify who you are by your student email. So it's very, very helpful when you guys do that as well. Um, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I I see maybe Sophie, do you want to say anything? Because she's the president right now, and she's been working really hard with the rest of the SGA just to keep you guys up to date. So Sophie, do you want to say anything? Because I can unmute you if you do.
Well, what, like, what's regarding what specifically?
I just couldn't tell, it looked like you were like, turned your screen on and then turned it off, so I wasn't sure.
I just wanted them to know kind of who I look, who I am. Wanted to put the name to the face, so.
Hi, Sophie.
How are you? Good to see you. So I actually don't even know, I can't even see everybody because I'm on present review, so I don't even see everyone who's on the screen. But I just want to thank all our SGA officers, and I'm going to read and make sure I don't leave everybody out. So we have Sophie, President, with Matthew, Connor as Treasurer, Tommy Secretary, Sam as Publicity Chair, Caroline, Special Affairs Coordinator, right? I'm using my cheat sheet. Ava, Sasha, Nina, and Kayla, I think I had everybody. Did I get everybody?
Our.
Sophie's, go ahead.
Oh, can we quickly shout out our Instagram? Because we, as the class of twenty-two-three, we use that more.
Yeah, I didn't know we had one, so thank you for letting me know. I would have put it on the slide.
Our, like, account name is, should be BCCSGA twenty-three, so it's the same thing, but.
Oh, same thing, okay, great, this makes it easier.
But we post more, more on that.
Awesome, thank you for letting us know that. So has everyone heard, Twitter and Instagram are the same handles, so BCCSGA twenty-three. Please follow those accounts specifically on Instagram, because as you heard your president say, they post on there more frequently. Thank you, Sophie, appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. SSL opportunities, please be mindful that this is a graduation requirement. This is not an option. So every student who graduates in the state of Maryland has to have their SSL hours complete. You can check out Montgomery Service's website. They actually have some virtual opportunities that would be great for, obviously, you because we're still, quote-unquote, stuck at home per se. So please check out Montgomery Service's website, so for some information there. If you want anything to be credited for this school year, you need to make sure you contact Ms. Henry. Ms. Henry is our SSL coordinator, and you can see her in her email. Her contact information is on the screen there. So make sure you reach out to Ms. Henry. You can also contact me if you'd like for any information about SSL. But please make sure you do that by June fifth to get anything submitted for this school year. So some of you will remember when we had our meeting, I think it was in December or January, I mentioned to you that I was working on a website, and I wanted to make sure we have this commemoration of your your kind of time through BCC because I'm scheduled to stay with you as administrator until you graduate in June of twenty-two-three, which is three years away. So it's right around the corner, so maybe you may think it's too far away, but your freshman year went away just like that. And so right now, I'm asking if you want to contribute to that website or kind of have like a, just a commemoration going on of our freshman year. So if you have any pictures that you would like to submit, specifically, if you don't have to, if you don't have BCC attire on, it's okay. But some of you guys have a lot of pictures that you took at school events, like the dance or sporting events, basketball games, football games. Just make sure that you email me to my dot net, which is the Google-linked email address that the administrators and all the staff members have. So it's david.muggera@mcpstmd.net. And then the website is, let me actually take this off full screen. It's a BCCtwenty-two-three dot org. And so it actually is not live right now. But I have this landing page created, so that way you can't see what's I'm working on behind the scenes. It just lets you know that it's coming soon. So we're going to try to get that up and running within the next three to four weeks or so. But it's very, very helpful if you are able to submit pictures. We have a lot of group photos, and I know that our time was cut short together. So there's a lot of things that I wanted to do with you all as a class, we're going to get to do. But this was a very interactive way for us to kind of stay or keep track of our path as we graduate in three years. So it's going to be at MCPs College and Career Ninth and Tenth Grade Forum. The forum will cover while around a student and also be a career exploration. This was sent to you, I believe, by either Ms. Richie or Ms. Parmley via Naviance. There's going to be a few panelists there, as you can see on the screen. We have students from Damascus, from Newton High School, Springbok High School, Blair McGruder. The sessions will take place on June second. This is going to be via Zoom, of course, not in person, eleven fifteen to twelve noon, or Wednesday, June third, which is eleven thirty to twelve fifteen, so about forty-five minute session. The Zoom login will be emailed to register participants. So obviously, this is a screenshot of the PDF that was sent out to my email that I received. But I'm just going to walk you through that process of how you actually do this real quickly. So if I'm going to go to the, sorry, there, the BCC website. Let me go to BCC. If I go to the BCC website, and let me see here. Ms. Dean, are you, Ms. Trimble, are you still able to see my screen? No?
No.
Okay, give me one second. Let me try this one more time. What about now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So sorry about that. If you go to the BCC website and you click on Counseling, and then I scroll down and I go to College and Career Center, then what I'll do is I'll scroll down and I'll go to this section right here where it says June second or June third, current freshmen and sophomores, we haven't left you out. So click on the register. You click on register, it's going to open up a new tab. And then on that tab, it would be the same file that I just showed to you. You can either use your QR code, use your phone to take a picture of this QR code. It'll take you to the registration site, or just click right here. It's an interactive PDF, so you just click where it says, click here. It'll take you to the registration page. You can enter in your student ID number, which high school you attend, which, of course, is the great BCC High School, and turn your information there and your MCPs emails. And this is very important, please do not put in your personal email, your Gmail, Yahoo, AOL. And then you want to pick which session you want to attend. Tuesday session or Wednesday session, they're going to send you the Zoom information link, which is going to be the Zoom link, and then the password to your MCPs student email. So that is actually how you're going to be able to join those sessions. So if you would want to join, please make sure you follow that process. And as I mentioned before, this is going to be recorded. I want to make sure everyone does that today because I don't know when it's going to close. It says it closed yesterday, but I did keep it open for for individuals who might have not gotten this information to them in time. And so let me go back and go to the screen here to the next one. All right. Okay, there we go. How to contact your school counselor? You can go to the BCC website, click on Counseling at the very top, as I just did, and it's going to show you exactly who your counselors are. We have a spreadsheet that I'm going to show you in just a moment of who your counselors are. At this point in time, everyone should know who their counselor is, but this is just for informational purposes. More information is going to come out soon on how to schedule a college meeting with your school counselor. That pretty much pertains to if you're really interested in looking at some colleges, universities. But at this point in time, that's probably more reserved for those who are going to be juniors or who are going to be seniors per se. But there's never any, it's never a bad time to ask any of your staff member or your your counselors exactly about what do you want to know about college and things of that nature. You're also able to contact me as well if you have any questions. So here's the breakdown of the ninth-grade counselor assignments by last name. We do have all of your counselors here, and this is how it's broken down. So you're able to figure out who your counselors, if you do not know who your school counselor is. So I actually want to quickly go over these questions. These are the four questions that were submitted to the the Google sheet that was sent out in your Google Classroom. The only, there wasn't a problem with this at all. It's just that there were individuals who didn't really put a question in, so I didn't include it in here. It was just. The only, there wasn't a problem with this at all. It's just that there were individuals who didn't really put a question in. So I didn't include it in here. It was just more so. They were making statements. They just wanted to see what this was about. And so I did pull these four student questions, but some of them were actually answered in the presentation, but I'll just quickly go over that. For timekeeping purposes. So the first one just asked whether it be both online and in-person class in the fall. That's something that's a, that's a very good question. Something that we do not know yet. Uh, we are waiting on guidance and seeing how it's recommended from. MSD and according to the CDC guidelines. So the Board of Education from Montgomery County Public Schools is currently weighing several options. I believe the three or four options, which consist of coming back to school as. Normal or doing a hybrid model, uh, where we are partially online, partially in person or some type of modified schedule. So. When that is finally revealed to. Us, everyone will know at the same exact time. Second question on here was, would you support an online learning course of action next year? I think that kind of ties in with the first one, I believe. I wasn't sure exactly what that question meant. But we are currently waiting on guidance from the Board of Education once they decide on whether or not we're going to return to, um, normalcy in the fall. Uh, the third question, I think that ties in and says what things need to get worse, they the same or how much better before? I assume that was before we go back, um, right now, as it kind of ties in. Once again, it depends on what the guidance is from Board of Education. And the last one on here is, is how will the grading system work between choosing pass fail and letter grade? That's something that we did cover in the beginning. You're going to be able to do that online. And I think the dates that I remember correctly was June 4th ending June 12th. Whether you just, you can decide on whether you want the pass fail or the letter grade. And that's specifically supposed to be per course. So you're going to be able to choose which specific courses according to what the guidelines are from this, uh, Board of Education. And then that'll be communicated to you virtually. So we, uh, have who to contact. Ms. Dean, of course, is your sponsor. Uh, Ms. Trimble is NYPD coordinator. Contact your school counselor. Uh, Ms. Audrey Libeskin is our school financial specialist. She deals with the obligations that we talked about earlier. Yearbook advisor is Ms. Judge. You can contact me if you have any questions about, uh, ordering the yearbook. Um, if you also need financial assistance, please make sure that you reach out to me as well. And of course, last but not least on there is myself, Dr. McGarraw. We want to make sure that you all have a. Fantastic and safe time as we transition. The last two weeks of school and we want to make sure that all of you are staying safe, staying healthy, that you're completing all of your assignments. We want to make sure that we are able to, if we do come back in the fall, that we're able to. Start fresh and we're able to see each other and have a great time for next school year. Uh, so at this time. That is actually the end of this presentation. We have covered several topics here. We talked about, uh, grading and reporting. We talked about NYPD. We talked about summer options specifically with health. Got a chance to hear from, uh, your class president, Sophie. Uh, just make sure that you all follow on Twitter. ECCSGA23, also on Instagram, BCCSGA23. And if you have any questions, some of the parents may be on here as well. I can't see who's on here because I'm on presenter view. But if you're on here as well, if you have any questions, please reach out to me by email. And the last thing, but not least, if you have photos, you and your friends, um, whether or not you're in. BCC attire, anything that you have, any events that you're at school. Football game, basketball game, something, pictures in the hallways, just make sure you email them to my dot net account. And it will look to basically build the website for, uh, BCCtwenty-two-three.org. All right. So with that being said. That is the end of our time together today. So we wish you all. A happy and lovely weekend and we'll hopefully be able to see all of you very soon as we will work towards. Getting the distribution or the picking, picking up of, uh, items from your personal, from your lockers and also bringing back the textbooks that you all have. Right? That being said, everyone, please stay safe and take care.